We guess then, I'll be there, I'll bring my own.
No, we can't, that is cultural.
That's the one with the trolley doll, our cultural cycle.
That was gonna be fun.
That's next.
That's my last word, I told me that one.
Tell you to come ride the trolley. We could trolley you around to your s- we could trolley you to the end.
Yeah, I'm sure she'd be thrilled.
Thirty-two of your closest friends.
Well, what's the dinner next week? She could serve her a fine gourmet, what's next week? Rusty Bell, ooh.
I now call order a regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, February second, two thousand sixteen, at six thirty, roll call.
Mayor Archie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Chairpenny?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seaver did call, she will be running late, but she will be here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Jack Long of Bayonet Regional Hospital. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Heavenly Father, we know of your greatness, we see it in nature, we see it in the universe. Father, we also see it, see your hand on people. People that you use to fulfill your purpose and to make the lives of others better. We thank you for that. Help this group tonight, this community, these leaders, to help others, encourage others, and be examples to others. Lord, in doing that, we know you will make all of our lives better. We ask for your protection for our families, for our community, for our nation, and for those who protect us. We ask for your wisdom and guidance in the decisions of this evening, and for your mercy and grace as seen in your salvation encourages tonight. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will now load the public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening.
Peter Lakkas, Peter Lakkas, five-one-four Ashland Avenue. A couple things. First off, the hogs at the trough in Tallahassee are about to pass some bills that greatly scare me. First off is they want to do an open carry bill. This is not the wild, wild west. We don't need people walking around with guns. I, I'm sure, as Bob Gallieri has spoken out, and if the chief and some of the police unions, if they would speak out, it's a nightmare for them to come to a scene. Who's the good guy? Who's the bad guy? And you know something? The people that are advocating this, these are the ones that really have a big ego, and they're the ones that want to most likely think they can be the superhero and save the day, and in essence, maybe create more problems. And tied with that, they want to put guns on campuses. Neither a good idea. Neither, neither. So if you have a chance, you can go to myflorida.com, there's links there to send statements to our representatives and let them know that, you know, this is foolish. Which also leads me to believe also, something else I wanted to talk about as we move forward to our election season. It's come to my observation that there's some signs out there that say vote yes on two that are not quite legal, in the sense that there is no disclaimer or paid political advertisement notation on there. So I'm not sure who, what is providing these, but they need to be removed or, you know, some kind of thing put on there to put the disclaimer, because that's definitely an ethics elections violation there. Which leads me to want to speak a little bit about the hospital issue itself. I know you guys were put in a position, no one wants to say they're not for the hospital. And we've had many issues with the hospital and stuff over the years. But in the parking lot of Helen Ellis, there's flags for them supporting the lightning. They've got billboards all over in the stadium, same thing with the Rays, same thing with the Bucks, you see their ads on TV. They're even self-funding a emergency room clinic down in Palm Harbor. Did they go to the county and ask for money for that? No, they come to Tarpon and they give us the scare tactic. Oh, you know, we got poor facilities, we gotta, we gotta do this, we need your help. And yet, in the meantime, candidates speak about reducing reserves, spending money on senior and youth programs. This money has to come from somewhere, and that money that the hospital pays for their lease goes into general funds. Can't have it both ways. How did we get in this predicament in the first place? I'll tell you that story another time, because I don't have enough of my four minutes left to go into that now. But I do want to say that we are in this situation because of previous administrations' actions for political purposes. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll go to our agenda. First item is proclamation, National Two-One-One Day. This proclamation reads, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas every hour of every day, someone in the United States needs essential services from basic human needs to securing adequate care for a child or aging parent. Whereas Two-One-One is a free and easy-to-remember telephone number connecting people to information about critical care and human services available in their community, volunteer opportunities, and improving the way in which people learn about and connect with the services they need. Whereas Two-One-One Tampa Bay Cares Incorporated, a nonprofit organization, provides Two-One-One services via a twenty-four-seven-three-hundred-and-sixty-five-days-call center accessible to everyone, regardless of language spoken or physical ability. And whereas Two-One-One provides confidential, judgment-free interaction with trained Two-One-One specialists who are able to provide people, were able to help people get to the root of their concerns, and who can provide available options for health and human service assistance. Whereas Two-One-One provides an online database of over three thousand health and human service program in Pinellas, located on Two-One-One Tampa Bay Cares Incorporated website at www dot two-one-one-tampa bay dot org. And whereas Two-One-One serves as a support system for emergency management to help disseminate critical information, assist people through disasters, and provide a long-term connection to relief and recovery. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim February eleventh, two thousand sixteen, as National Two-One-One Day, and I believe Mickey will receive this.
And I'm actually George Stephan, also, one of our advisory council members, who's with us.
Y'all wanna have something to say that I know George probably would love to.
Sure.
First of all, again, my name's Mickey Thompson, I'm the executive director with Two-One-One Tampa Bay Cares, and on behalf of our board, our advisory council, and we have George Stephan as one of our members, our staff and our volunteers, we want to really thank Mayor Archie, as well as all the commissioners, and the entire city of Tarpon. You're actually joining together with about two-hundred-and-thirty communities across the United States, really recognize this day to really get the word out to people who need help and don't know where to turn. Maybe they're struggling with life challenges, financial struggles, having trouble making ends meet, paying the rent, electric. You can certainly call Two-One-One, and we can help direct you to resources. I wanted to just share one brief program, we are really trying to get the word out for adults without minor children. We have partnered a piloting program with the county to provide financial assistance for overdue rent, eviction, folks facing eviction, and overdue utilities, electric and water that are shut off, to help them out. So certainly, there's some eligibility criteria for that, but those who are really struggling, if you could help us get the word out to our vulnerable, we get a lot of calls from seniors, who they can stay in their home. So if you could help us with that on this National Two-One-One Day, and of course, I always ask people to help celebrate, if you could tell somebody about Two-One-One, who doesn't know about it. Do you want to say anything, George? Mayor Archie put you on the, the spot.
No, again, my name's George Stephan, I'm retired from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, and was on the board for many years of Two-One-One and now on the advisory board. So as a former law enforcement officer, of course, contact with citizens of this county and certainly Tarpon Springs, this is a wonderful service. We appreciate the, the support and certainly the recognition this evening. So essentially, Mickey said it all and provided you an overview of the, of the service. But thank you again, we appreciate what you all do and the recognition tonight. Thank you.
And we definitely thank you for all that y'all do for the citizens of this county. Are there any public comments on this item? Next, we have another proclamation, American Heart Month, and this proclamation reads, whereas maintaining a strong heart is key to a long, healthy life, the number-one killer of American men and women, cardiovascular disease is responsible for one out of every four deaths in the United States. Whereas during American Heart Month, we renew our fight both as a nation and in each of our lives against a devastating epidemic of heart disease. And whereas working with the healthcare provider can help prevent or treat conditions that can lead to heart disease. Whereas Congress designated February as American Heart Month in nineteen sixty-three to highlight the importance of ongoing fight against cardiovascular disease. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand sixteen as American Heart Month in the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida. I encourage all our residents to remember all of the steps that each of us could take to reduce the risk of heart disease and recommit to better heart health. I think this one will be mail. And the last proclamation is one for Black History Month. This reads, proclamation, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas Black History Month and National African American History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by Black Americans and a time for recognizing the central role of African Americans in U.S. history. And whereas in nineteen twenty-six, Dr. College G. Woodson, a Harvard scholar, established the observance with the view to revealing the contributions, achievement, and involvements of African American people in the development of our American democracy. Whereas we must acknowledge and pay tribute to the generation of our citizens who struggle with adversity, risk their lives for justice, fought a fight that at times seemed impossible to win, and persevered and continued to fight for the quality and American dream. Whereas we see African Americans engaged throughout our society as friends, neighbors, scholars, teachers, businesspeople, community leaders, and contributors to our quality of life. Whereas Black History Month encourages all of us to come together, reflect on our collective past, and reveal its impact on present conditions. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand sixteen as Black History Month. Are there any public comments on either one of these items? Hearing none, we'll go to our considered agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like to pull up more information about? Yes.
I just had a question about item number six. I noticed, of course, that we're wanting to seek for another year of assistance for Gerardo or Gerano and Associates. Do we anticipate that we're gonna need them the whole year, or how is that?
We hope so, because one of the major things they're gonna assist us with is the mirrors project. So with the mirrors project back on, all the increases with the county and stuff, this is for Mr. Dave Healy, and we brought him on board with the mirrors thing. So hopefully, if we're not using the service, that probably means that the mirrors projects get stalled for the, how many times, but we look like we're going forward, so we wanted to keep him on to be ready and to assist us with the process. We don't only have to do here, but through the county to hopefully finally get that built and mirrors through and stuff. So that's the major purpose of having this on there.
Yeah, because I also see that our planning director said there were an additional fourteen-thousand permits last year over this year, and I just wondered what efficiency would be of hiring someone in that department instead of paying an outside source, you know, the money. I realize now we need that, those people.
Yeah, well, that's the major thing. If we had our plan to have to get involved into the mirrors project, we wouldn't have time for all those. That's why, especially with the expertise, and you know, we brought him in before to lead that project, so that frees them up to be able to do those other things. If mirrors hopefully for the last time moves forward and we work on the next year to get that through and complete.
Any other questions, comments? Chair will entertain a motion for approval. Any other public comments?
Peter Lakkas. Thank you, Rhea. That was some of the thoughts I had earlier about if we're gonna spend that much money. I know when we had, you know, hit the skids in oh-nine and ten, we were cutting back, and we had some staff leave, and things weren't as busy. And my question, is that fourteen hundred total permits in that timeframe, or fourteen hundred more than the same timeframe last year? That was kind of confusing, I wasn't sure about that. But I understand the logic in doing this, and David Healy is very highly respected, so what I would suggest to the board is use them for these particular projects only, and maybe bring someone in temporarily, part-time, to work on other city issues with the objective, when these projects are done and you can phase the consultants out, you'll have someone somewhat prepared to maybe step in as a full-time person for that seventy-something thousand a year. And then you'll have someone you've trained and brought in and familiar with our codes and the way things need to be done here. So when budget season comes, you may want to look, in fact, there may be presently an unfunded position in the planning department. I'm not sure, because I know in the past, we've had positions that we froze but didn't fill. So there may already be an assistant planner, or planner two, or one, I'm not sure of the categories, but just something to look at, and thank you for bringing that up, Rhea.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Chairpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Our next item is orders, resolution, item number eight, Resolution Twenty-Sixteen, Night Zero Three, Finance Department Reorganization.
Resolution Twenty-Sixteen, dash, zero, three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the Finance Department organization, including revised job descriptions, pay grades, and creation of new job titles, and providing for an effective date here of its resolution, Twenty-Sixteen, dash, zero, three, by title only.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. We've been working on a finance reorganization, and we're trying to look at all the, all the positions within the Finance Department. I'm not sure when the last time we've really gone through and looked at all the positions and job duties and everything involved. But it's sort of stimulated by, we, like I say, in the Finance Department, we had three employees retire in the past year. I, I don't remember the last time we've had so many retired. I guess the thing, one, one of the things is now I'm one, I'm the oldest person in there right now, so. Over the past year, we've been reevaluating the positions, their job descriptions, the overall structure of the Finance Department. With the retirements, we thought it was a good time to look at these positions, their duties, job descriptions, and the structure of the Finance Department. We were also looking for operating efficiencies within the positions and the department as a whole. The proposed, Finance Director provides, the one I propose has a more laddered structure within the departments with the grades. This structure is also one that will cover the department, I believe, for years to come, you know, past my retirement, probably. This reorganization also has a net savings of seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. A major changes to the reorg- within the reorganization is the accounting manager, formerly Senior Staff Accountant. Payroll Coordinator is formerly Payroll Specialist. Accounting Coordinator is formerly Accounting Specialist. Accounting Specialist is formerly Accounting Payroll Specialist. And the Accounting Technician is formerly Accounting Clerk Two. This is a flow chart of the structure of the Finance Department. On the bottom, you see the current financial structure, and on the top is a proposed finance structure. And as you can see, the Accounting Technicians are now grade twelve, Accounting Specialist grade fourteen, Accounting Coordinator and Payroll Coordinator grades fifteen, and now we have the Accounting Manager at grade twenty-one, the Assistant Finance Director at grade twenty-five, and then over to the side, we have the Finance Budget Analyst at grade seventeen, and then the Finance Director at grade twenty-eight. This next slide shows the funding for the position based on the finance structure, and on the left is the finance structure as it currently is, and on the right is with these changes in the reorg is a proposed finance structure, you know, what's in this reorganization here. And on the far right is a net increase, decrease of all these changes in the reorganization, and then down on the bottom right is the net savings of seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. That's all I had for now, I'm open for any questions.
I really don't have any questions, I just say that, you know, I thank you for having the vision to look at my reorganization during that time of, of, of change anyway, to help that department operate better. It's been one of, and you always hate to say it, I just use it as one of our stronger departments, and that's what has helped us to be, to be fiscally viable during times where other cities were struggling, and I know that was under the President's directive to your help and leadership and all the others that was there. So I just thank you for bringing it forward.
Well, it was, it was a good time to do it, you know, with everything, you know, with three people retiring, I've never had three people gone at once. So it looks a good time to look at everything and...
Trying to make the, the best of a bad situation. You know, you hate to lose three people that have been there, but it's a chance to do some different things. Any, Commissioner Tarpan?
Thank you. No need to echo the mayor's comments, you do a great job, and we appreciate you taking the opportunity to look at your department and do the evaluation necessary to keep us moving forward. My only question is, have you filled these positions already?
The one position, the Financial Budget Analyst, the advertisement's out, but for the other one, the Accounting Manager, I wanted to hopefully get the reorganization approved, and then hopefully tomorrow we'll, we'll get those advertisements out.
Great. Feeling optimistic about it?
Well, I'm hoping so. Sometimes it's hard to fill the government positions, you know, sometimes you want the ideal person that's got government accounting experience, and you know, you just hope that person's out there right now.
So if you haven't filled the positions and there's a pay range in terms of the scale, how do you know where you're gonna potentially save?
Well, I really, I don't like going over the midpoint when I'm hiring somebody new. And that, that's part of the reason I go with the Accounting Manager position, formerly was a Senior Staff Accountant. Every time the last two people we tried to fill it, we hired it at, at the maximum of the, of that salary, and it just, I don't think that's a good thing to do for the city or that person in that position. That's why we thought that we needed to raise that grade and maybe attract more people to apply to that position and come in, and plus, we're asking them to do a few more duties too, so that position really will be the backup for the Assistant Finance Director, and really know, probably, hopefully, that I know the Assistant Finance Director and be able to fill in for that for us.
So the projection is based on a middle pay grade?
Yes. Well, it's really the ones like minimum plus, I think, twenty-five percent, which is a little bit below the midpoint there.
The other, George Seaver?
I was amazed that you could save seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars since some of these were pay grade increases, so good job.
Well, I think some of, you have some people leaving that have been here for quite a few years.
We're at the top of the pay grade, yeah.
Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Chairpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Our next item is Resolution Twenty-Sixteen, dash, zero, five, meter reading and billing agreement, Harbor Watch.
Resolution Twenty-Sixteen, dash, zero, five, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing execution of an agreement renewal with Harbor Watch Homeowners Association, Inc., Harbor Watch for maintaining certain city meter reading and billing services related to its utilities and services, and providing for an effective date here of its resolution, Twenty-Sixteen, dash, zero, five, by title only.
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director, and this item is a renewal of a meter reading agreement with Harbor Watch that we had approved back in two thousand and eleven, and it's a five-year agreement, so we're coming up on that deadline this month. So it's something we went back with Harbor Watch, and with any type of homeowners association, it's a volunteer type of organization, so there were some new people there, and I was pleased to see that they weren't looking to challenge the original agreement and turn it upside down. They were happy to work with us to get this resolved, and this, this agreement that's attached in your backup really represents very similar language to the initial agreement with very little changes, so we recommend approval.
Any questions, Mr. Smith? Chair will entertain a motion?
Approve.
Any other public comments on this item? Roll call.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Chairpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Our item number ten is Resolution Twenty-Sixteen, Night Zero Six, authorize execution of FDOT Highway Landscape Reimbursement and Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement.
Resolution Twenty-Sixteen, dash, zero, six, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute a landscape reimbursement and maintenance memorandum of agreement from the Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT for funding for landscaping improvements along Pinellas Avenue, SR five-ninety-five, and providing for an effective date, it's Resolution Twenty-Sixteen, dash, zero, six, by title only.
This is something we've been working on a long time, probably since the last project, and a lot of people weren't happy with just being able to put the crate Myrtles on alternate nineteen, so maybe been from that or longer, but the good news is, we've been having some good cooperation with FDOT. They knew the importance with all the beautifications you can see in the town, what we've done landscaping-wise, we saw what happened on US nineteen, a project we've been working on a long time. This one's simply a win-win. First of all, they're gonna give us just over a hundred thousand dollars to do the new landscaping, and we agree after that to, to maintain it. As you can see in the agreement, we've got a submitted plan, we've already submitted them some concepts for tentative approval before they gave this to us. We will be bringing back the final plan we're gonna submit to them, to the commission. We'll be showing you some, you know, what our proposal is, what you look at, make some adjustments, although realizing the adjustments has to be approved by them. So after we approve this tonight, we'll put our final product together, we'll bring it to the Board of Commissioners, we'll get final approval on that from you, then we'll submit it to them, get the okay, and then again, we'll be installing a hundred thousand dollars worth of landscaping that, that they will pay for, and we will take over and maintain it from that time.
Thank you, I just say, I definitely concur that our relationship for these days have been great with FDOT, the project that they did out on US nineteen turned out great for us and them, so that we look forward to another great project. Commissioner Tarpan?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm obviously in support of the project, I just want to make sure that when you bring it back to the commission, there's adequate time, if the commission does have any comments, and I understand that the plan is restricted to FDOT's approval, so I get that, but I just want to make sure that there's gonna be enough time, that if there were some suggestions or alternatives that the commission would like to see, that we're not gonna get log G, and then we won't be able to potentially see those changes reflected.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna turn it over pretty fast. Oh, yeah, we're going to turn it over pretty fast. Once we get this agreement tonight and send it to them, we're going to get those up there and try to get it at the earliest possible meeting. So, you know, you see the timelines, now we've got plenty of time, but...
But when you bring it to the commission, because we've never seen the plan that you're proposing. So when we see the plan, if there are any changes restricted, of course, there will be an opportunity for the commission to potentially, you know, say we like this better or this here.
Right. And those changes that you'll make on that we'll submit back to them, just note that, you know, there could be, you know, they could tell us yes or no. But yes, you'll be in the final decision-making process of seeing what we have. And then, because we've got a range too. We pretty much know what they'll approve and what they'll not approve. So we'll kind of have that there for you. Here's what it looks like, but here is the other kind of things that they would already suggest they would approve. Here are the things we're not going to get, so there's no sense even asking. We'll have all those options to you. And as we've done with the other projects, you've made some changes of types of trees, types of lands. You'll have the full opportunity to make that and do that before we say it'll be your product that you submit to there with plenty of time to make those changes and request any of those things from the list that they've kind of gave us the tentative okay that they'll go for.
Okay. And within the 100 grand that they're going to reimburse us, is that, was all of that initially coming from tree money or highway funding? We're paying for the front, and then it's being reimbursed, right?
Ronald...
And then my other question in relation to that is, is it just money for trees, or is there going to be any money allotted for, you know, some pavers or...
It's just landscape. It's from their landscaping fund, so it's, you know...
But I mean, sometimes when you're doing, sometimes when we're doing the landscape, we have to, you know, cut out a curb, or we have to do some paperwork. So is any portion of that money included in that budget?
I don't know. I'll check. It may be.
Okay.
Maybe I'll check for it.
Okay.
From what I understand, it was just going to be, I think, expensed either out of the non-departmental and the general fund, just based on the money was going to be reimbursed. It was, I think, when you're getting into the tree bank, you have to make some certain qualifications to get the money out of the tree bank.
So because it's being reimbursed, it doesn't really matter where it's coming from?
Correct.
My next question is, I know that we talked about this initially in terms of it only going to Lemon Street. Are there any discussions forthcoming about Lemon Street North on alternate 19?
We can look at those, yes.
So nothing yet?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Tarrpanny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number 11, Order 2016-01, Application 15-109, Mears Town Center Special Area Plan Amendment, has been continued to February 16th, record session. We do have an addendum that's Resolution 2016-07, supporting home rule authority.
Resolution 2016-07, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, in support of municipal home rule authority and providing for an effective date. Resolution 2016-07 by title only.
Thank you. Just want to leave out on this. I thought I saw your name, but...
Oh, that's, no, that's fine. This is related to home rule, and I appreciate staff putting this together on short notice. Basically, this is related to fracking, and more than that, it's related to the state potentially overstepping what they should be doing from a governmental standpoint. Hopefully, everybody, I know this was given to us late, and that's because I asked for it late, so I appreciate staff getting it together. But hopefully, everyone had an opportunity to review this. But the bottom line is, regardless of how anybody feels about the concept of fracking, which I personally have some serious environmental concerns with, but regardless of how you feel about that issue, what we're really talking about here is home rule. And like it says in the resolution, home rule is the power of a local municipality to set up its own system of governing and local ordinances without being governed by the state, so on and so forth. And that's what I think we're dealing with in this situation. And that's why I ask that this resolution be placed on the agenda, and I hope everybody would be willing to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody have any comments, concerns?
I have a comment. Commissioner Banther?
Again, yes, though I just want to thank the vice mayor for bringing this forward. As he said, it's irrelevant to what the issue is. A home rule is very important, and though anytime we can preserve our options and making our own rules and laws, as long as they're in accordance with state laws and having the most influence over what's around us, is very important. And I would like this to be sent to our representatives in State Center, please.
I'd say I definitely can support it. I think that you're right. Home rule is the backbone of especially local government, but also, you know, trying to prevent continuous unfunded mandates. If we can get a motion for approval.
Move for approval? Second.
Any public comments on this item?
Beer to Blackus, 514 Ashland Avenue. The home rule is a great part of this, but the fracking is really the big issue. And let me explain why it does matter to Tarpon Springs. What if some exploratory oil company goes up to Pasco County, right over by, what's that, Anklot Elementary School, and buys five acres? They want to start doing fracking. I think that's probably within maybe a couple of miles from what we just spent 45, $50 million to put a water plant in. And all of our wells predominantly are in this northwest corner, and that's not an issue? Look at what's going on in Flint. And that was just from changing the water from going from a glacier lake to a polluted And if we can't say no, or get somebody in Pasco, if it's Sip and Pasco, to say no, it's the same issue kind of like with the gun stuff. You've got all these oil interests handing out campaign money and buying politicians to say, oh, well, we want to be able to, we don't want to have to follow a rule here and a rule there. It's different. They want to say, well, we want to make it uniform. There's some logic to that, but don't restrict us from further restricting or protecting our resources. And we do have an investment in this, $50 million. And let me tell you why it's a bigger investment. Because if they do fracking and it messes up the water plant where we can't use it, and the city of Tarpon Springs is held liable for the bonds to pay that, we'll be paying for that plant for years and not getting a drop of water.
Any other public comments? Roll call.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Tarrpanny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. We now go to miscellaneous items. That's item number 12, and that's appointments to the Marine Commerce Committee. I think our dilemma has been made easier since we had eight candidates and one withdrew, so we only have seven. Plus, there's some comments or questions. Entertainer motion?
Move to approve current board applications. Second.
Any public comments on this? Roll call.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Tarrpanny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number 13, Discussion of City Attorney Contract. Not sure how we're going to start off. You going to start it off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. You've seen my memorandum dated January 27. The firm's present agreement expired on January 26th, or January 19th, excuse me. That agreement was a little bit foggy as to its expiration date, but given the three-year escalation in fees on the hourly portion of it, I think it's better perceived as three years. I very much like to continue on as city attorney, and so I propose the contract that's before you. The only thing that really changes is the hourly rates. We do rate studies periodically in the firm, and as I've written in my memo, our last one was in late 2014, about 15 months ago, and it revealed that our, and we've known this for a long time, hourly rates are simply low. Part of that has to do with the fact that John Hubbard was good at so, so, so many things. However, the business of a law practice was not among his top priorities all the time. So we found that in the cities where John was practicing, our rates were historically low. And so we've tried to, over a period, a long period of years, sort of get those to not set the market, but to be competitive within the market. So I am proposing, as we did in our last agreement under Jimmy Yakavone, an escalator from 145 presently to 165 in 2018 on hourly work. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
I don't have any questions. I just was reading where it said that you was responsive to all the inquiries of the board and individual commissioners. And I just said, just because it didn't have a mayor there, you know, I don't have a problem either, so. Are there any discussion, comments? If not, then can we get a motion?
Well, this is on as the discussion item. If there are no, if there are no...
You want to bring it back?
Then it'll come back on the next meeting for your approval on this agenda.
Any public comments?
Sorry to chew your ears out, but as a discussion, I would think you'd want to have a little more facts to discuss other than Mr. Deneau's request for a raise. While he mentions a survey, well, provide that survey. Or maybe we have some data in contacting other cities and municipalities that are non-Trask Deneau to see what comparable firms charge. And as Mr. Deneau mentioned, you're with this firm through historical perspective. Mr. Hubbard originally came and then passed it on to Mr. Yakavone, and now we're with Mr. Deneau and Trask. And I don't deny that they don't do valuable services. That's not the point here. What I would say at this point is that maybe it's time for the city to put out an RFP, or at least at this point, if you're discussing and looking for facts, to see what other firms are available or other groups that would provide similar services at comparable or competitive costs. You're trying to save money. That's part of our process. You have a very good staff, Jay and everybody, they know how to do all this, and maybe it's time to start looking at this. It was about five years ago, at one point, we were looking as to whether even to maintain an outside firm versus hiring our own attorney. And if, one of the things I would have wanted to see or would like to see before it came to vote is, in these last three years, what have we paid them other than the $72,000? How much have we paid in all these other things? And then there's also a thing in the contract that even though it was there before, I have issues with, which with regards to if they have to go out to another attorney firm to do services that will be retainers, the city has to pay for it. Well, if we have to pay an attorney to do retainer services, then we should deduct that amount out of the retainer. So, I don't know, I've given you a few things to think about before you make any final decisions, but maybe it's time for the city to look at reevaluating and doing an RFP. And if you read the Sunday Business section, you open it up, there's a whole section of people in the news, and I'll tell you, usually five out of eight are all legal. There's a whole bunch of new young legal attorneys here, and new firms, and combining and stuff, and they're all competing against each other. So maybe it's a time at this point where the city could look to take this surge of new young attorneys and competitive firms to their advantage. Thank you.
Thought we had another comment there. I just say that, you know, from my perspective, just looking at this, and we're looking at a $10 increase as far as for hourly rate, to me, doesn't justify saying, let's go out for an RFP, let's look for another attorney, just because they're out there. One thing I like is that, you know, I don't think that because of the advice of our attorney, we've been getting extraordinary lawsuits, those type of things. I look at the history of the relationship that we've had, not with Hubbard, but with Jay and what he's done since he's been here, as to why I didn't really have any comments. You know, I mean, it's looking at what's presented to us from that perspective, you know. I just don't believe that you just go out to RFP just because you want to save $2, especially $2 that might cost you a lot of dollars. And if you're going to have anything, to me, if I'm sitting up here or if anybody else is here, I think you want to have an attorney that you can trust, you believe that's going to give you the best possible advice, do the best that you can as far as moving ahead. And that's the way I've looked at it when either Mr. Hubbard was here or any of the other attorneys that have represented him and even predated Mr. Hubbard, is that you need to have an attorney that you can trust, not one that's the cheapest that you can find. I think that when the commission went through that exercise of seeing whether we should do it in-house or another way to do it, that's what basically came back, is that you want good advice. So that's my perspective. I have to say that, so, because we hadn't said a lot about what's been presented to us, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think it's also important to recognize the historical and institutional knowledge that not only Jay has, but also the firm has in terms of looking at an outside attorney to come in and them not having that knowledge. So, you know, I didn't necessarily feel the need to comment on it because I'm satisfied with the services that are rendered. But at the same time, like you said, I think it's necessary to kind of recognize that and that you may save a few dollars by going out to, you know, a new attorney. But at the same time, if it takes them, you know, five hours to look up a piece of information or knowledge dating back to a case that Jay's already covered, then that may end up costing us more money in the long run. So that's my two cents on that.
Oh, Vice Mayor? Thank you. I didn't bring any numbers with me, and maybe it would have been nice if it was in the backup. But during my time on this board, I paid very close attention to the money that we've spent on with our city attorney. And former Commissioner Blackus did bring up that we had looked at possibly changing things up from a city attorney's standpoint five years ago. One of the things that did come out of that exercise was that, and I believe it was Mr. Yakavone at the time, we really more clearly and definitively spelled out what was covered by the retainer and what was not covered by the retainer. And again, I don't have the numbers with me today, but I can tell you that the amount of money that we were spending through the city attorney was reduced dramatically, and I mean dramatically. I think we really have a very fair system now with our current agreement that we have in place. And that's why I didn't have any problems with this agenda item. Furthermore, for the last several years, we have had some raises for our employees, which is wonderful that we've had the opportunity to do that. We have not included the city attorney when we've looked at those raises. So that's another reason why I was in support of the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Banther?
Thank you. Yes, and just also, just to clarify, when we look at what we're paying for Jay and the city attorney, et cetera, we're retaining the entire firm. It's not just that one attorney. So while there's times I think about, yes, it would be nice to have our own counsel here. I know I've been to legal cities, there's larger cities that have two attorneys on staff, sometimes more, it's almost like their own law firm. We don't have those kind of assets, and I think we're, our money's much better spent retaining, at least from what I can tell, one of the best government, you know, legal firms in the Bay Area. So we have access to the entire firm's resources and not just one attorney that we have on staff with obviously having limits. So that's my perspective when I'm looking at approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll bring that back next meeting. Thank you. That basically concludes our... our agenda. Uh, chief?
No comments, Mayor.
State attorney?
No comments.
City manager?
No, sir.
Madam clerk?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
No comments. Thank you.
Yeah, we're on a roll here now. Uh, Commissioner Seaver?
All right. I have to say something. I just wanted to remind everyone that our first, first Friday is happening, uh, this Friday downtown. And we hope it's a, a, a big success. And, uh, so invite everybody to come out to first Friday.
Commissioner Chairpan?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to tell everybody, you know, the Mayor's Fitness Challenge is ongoing. I know y'all can see this, uh, tremendous change in my physique. But, uh, let you know, it's still not too late to, to, to get involved. And we're having a lot of fun. Sometimes some of the things that they're having us do and me do, I'm not very appreciative of, but hopefully it'll work to my good. Uh, the other thing is just, uh, just a point of excitement, I, for, for me is that, uh, we've had a chance to connect with some of the, um, previous Super Bowl winners. You know, Super Bowl is Sunday and they've been giving out these gold balls to, uh, former Super Bowl participants. And we've been fortunate that three former Tarpon High, um, uh, students have gone to the Super Bowl and won. So on Thursday at six o'clock, uh, we've gotten in contact with two of them. I know it's gonna be there. We're trying to make sure that the third one's there to present the gold ball to Tarpon High. You know, I'm especially proud being, uh, a former Spudger to know that we got three individuals that, uh, actually, um, not only went to the NFL, but won the, uh, the Super Bowl. So, uh, Thursday at six, out at the high school should be a, a fun affair, you know, for us as a city and our, our school too. So with that, we'll adjourn at, uh, what's that, seven sixteen?
I think it's fifteen.
Fifteen? I, I, I wanted it to be thirteen, cause I think...
We had a wager down here.
Seven twenty-two.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry about that. I don't know who won.